I've admitted everybody that was in the waiting room. I've renamed everybody and.
Okay, as soon as you start the recording, let me know.
Has started.
Okay. I call a November 10th, 2020 meeting of the Newton Planning Board to order. As Chair of the Newton Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, and most recently extended by Executive Order 2020-21, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting telephonically or by using the Zoom website. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the town website. If anyone had a problem, they should email the Planning Board Office at In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be rescheduled and adjourned. Please note that all votes will be taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Also, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 23 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, most recently extended by Executive Order 2020-21, the Planning Board is relieved from the statutory and local requirements to meet on a particular schedule or a certain number of times within a given timeframe. The Planning Board is also relieved from complying with statutory or local deadlines for accepting, hearing, and acting on Planning Board applications. Note that the attendees of the meeting, your microphones and or phone will be muted. The Board Chair will specify when public comment period is open for an application. Town staff will be in attendance at the meeting to manage the public comment process. If you are participating online with the Zoom program, click on the hand icon at the bottom of the screen. This will raise your hands so that the moderator knows that you wish to speak. If you are participating by phone, press star nine. This will indicate to the moderator that you wish to speak. When it is your turn, the moderator will unmute you and let you know that you can share your comments. When speaking during the meeting, please announce your name so the administrative assistant can know who is speaking as he is taking the minutes. This time I'd ask the administrative assistant to call the role of the members.
Mr. Hamel.
Present and alone.
Ms. Esterbrook.
I'm present and alone.
Ms. Collier.
Present and alone.
Mr. Foote.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present and not alone.
Mr. Andrews.
Present and alone.
Mr. Kronlook.
Present and not alone.
Ms. Allen. Ms. White.
Present and not alone.
Mr. Swizer. He's not on my list. Mr. Swat, not on my list. And Mr. Zalinski, also not on my list.
Thank you very much.
I'm here. Ms. Rowden.
I'm here.
Mr. Chair, you have a full contingent.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll move to the first item on the agenda, and I will recuse myself on the first two items on the agenda. Sandy will chair the meeting for those two items.
Thank you, Roger. I'd like to appoint Baba White as voting member for this first two items where Roger has stepped down. So, we have a continuation of 125 Development Court of Plasino, Hampshire, requests a public hearing for a major non-residential site plan on Puzzle Lane, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 14, block 1, lot 27-7. When speaking during the meeting, please announce your name so the administrative assistant can know who is speaking as he is taking minutes. So. Where to continuation? Do we have any new information, Jen? On this?
I have not received any new information on this case. The outstanding items from it, you have not taken jurisdiction were primarily related to architectural renderings.
Okay.
Sandy, you might want to see if the applicant has any information or anything they might want to say. This is Jen.
Oh, okay. Is there any representative from the applicant on the phone that would like to say anything at this time? No, hearing none. Good.
Sandy, Coleman McDonough is raising his hand. I don't know if Jim needs to unmute him.
Jim, could you unmute Coleman if he's there, please?
He is self-muted.
He's self-muted? If you're on the phone, it's.
Okay, he's unmuted.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, Coleman McDonough, applicant. This plan's been in for some time. I didn't know if there was any additional comments by the Planning Board. As far as the rendering, you know, we had planned on doing the same type of building. It's a pre-engineered building that we usually do, either split face block or, you know, architectural stone with awnings. We could take some pictures and forward it to the Planning Board, but I didn't know if the Planning Board had any other input on the lot thing, other than the rendering. Everything seems to be complete, other than the acceptance of ZBA.
Sandy, this is Jen. Just to further clarify, it is the building detail that is the one outstanding thing that hasn't been supplied. It does include things like height elevation, layout, and the renderings themselves, just for the board to be aware of.
Okay. And then we did have a list of things from the town engineer, correct?
Yes. Actually, from you, this is Annie. Actually, from you, there were some things about no lighting. Yeah, also from the engineer. Yep.
There were concerns. The lighting is on there. They had submitted some subsequent information after my August 6th letter that I had provided. Things like the snow storage detail, the lighting detail. There was landscaping involved, so really the only thing left is that building detail. There were comments from Mike Vignali, but I think they've largely been addressed. They were not technically missing information for your site plan regulations, though.
But it is considered incomplete where we don't have that architectural rendering of the building.
Correct, and no waiver was asked for.
And do we have a list of waivers for this, too? Was there any waivers requested?
There were no waiver. There were no waivers requested for this one.
Okay.
There were variances that were necessary. My understanding from the zoning board last night is the appeal for a rehearing was denied. So at this point, the only movement for that to be appealed is to go to Superior Court.
So Planning Board had no waivers, but the ZBA had a variant, a waiver, a variance they had to do.
Correct. The Planning Board at this point, if it was a complete application and you went to approve it, could only conditionally approve it with them successfully getting all of the necessary variances.
It would seem, since it's not complete, that it would be smart for the applicant to ask for another continuance and to give us an estimated time by when. This is Annie. Sorry.
Correct. Oh, this is Andrew. The Planning Board could make a motion to, I don't know, deny it as a complete application? That we don't have, the application is not complete.
So Sandy, this is Jen. And you should certainly hear from the applicants, but just so the Planning Board knows, and I'm on page three of your policies and procedures manuals, for those who might have them in front of you. I'm looking at Section 3, which is Board Action, and it's Section 3B2, which states, "Any application not found to be complete shall be determined to be incomplete and shall be denied provided in accordance with RSA 676-3. However, the Board at its discretion may continue the hearing for determination of completeness to receive further information." So effectively, it is at the Board's discretion whether you want to, the applicant can certainly request a continuance. It's at the Board's discretion with whether you choose to do so or not with a incomplete application. And Coleman also has his hand up again.
And he is self-muted.
Go ahead, Coleman.
Yes, Coleman McDonough. Could I get a continuance to submit a rendering or pictures of the bill, of the front of the building and elevations? Submit, I'll get that over to Jennifer this week for approval.
Right, you'd have to meet all the requirements of the, that section, right, Jen? Not just, I don't know.
Correct. I mean, it is elevations, it's layout, it's height, it's renderings.
Sandy, Larry.
Go ahead, Larry.
I'll make a motion to continue 125 Development for TacMap 14, block 1, lot 27-7.
This is Annie. I'll second that motion.
Do you want to pick a date until? Coleman, do you know how long it'll take you to get that? You want to do the November meeting or go into December?
No, I'll go to the next meeting, which is.
November 24.
Okay. Yeah, November 24th, good, Sandy. Thank you.
I don't think anybody wants to discuss it, so Jim, could you call the roll?
Mr. Kronlook.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew, sorry, Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Foote.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Ms. Esterbrook.
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Okay. So we'll move on to item number two. 125 Development Court Plasino, Hampshire, requested public hearing for a 36 lot subdivision on 108 Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 14, block 1, lot 27-3. Same thing, please say your name when you're speaking so that we can administrative assistant knows who's talking. Sorry, I can't talk. Okay. Jen, this is the same stage, correct? We have not taken jurisdiction. We're deciding on the completeness of the application?
Correct, although on this one, there are many more things that are outstanding. Okay. It is a much larger proposal as well, so that would make sense.
Correct.
And Coleman's raising his hand again.
Look, Coleman's raising his hand. Yes, Coleman? Come, you can see that, Jen. I can't see that. I can't see that.
If you look at the participants list, you can see it.
Oh, I don't have that on the side, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Coleman.
He's muted again?
Nope.
Yes, Coleman McDonough. We thought we'd have the 27 items completed. Mike Vignali's 27 items. We did not get them all completed, and I was going to request a continuance until the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Sandy, this is Jen. Just similar to the last one, the variances, again, were, that were necessary for this application, were denied for a rehearing with the zoning board last night.
Okay. So.
And the same discretion with whether you continue it or not is fully at the Board.
Right.
Sandy, this is Annie. May I make a motion?
Oh, go ahead, Annie.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this public hearing to 125 Development, New Hampshire, map 14, block 1, lot 27-3, subdivision plan review to November 24.
This is Larry. I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Jim?
I think Coleman had his hand up.
Coleman has hand up again?
Yes.
Go ahead, Coleman.
No, can you hear me?
Oh. You're just keeping it up.
No, I, it was up from the last time. I have nothing else to say. I'd appreciate the continuance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Jim, could you call the roll, please?
Kronlook.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Andrews.
Mr. Andrews.
Ah, there you go. Aye.
Ms. White.
Aye.
Mr. Foote.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Ms. Esterbrook.
Aye.
And Mr. Edwards, I'm changing your position on the list. You're right next to Ms., above Ms. Esterbrook, and I get. Don't ask.
It's Andrews.
Yes.
I've started, I know. All right, Jim, I've been called worse.
Consider it this way, one of my favorite uncles, that was his last name.
Okay.
Jim, did you announce the vote?
That was unanimous.
Okay, so that ends that item. I will resume the chair. And next item on the agenda is Christina Kuro and Mark Rochon of Newton, New Hampshire, and Terrence and Mary Ann Tully of Boxhead, Mass. Request a public hearing for a lot line adjustment between 24 and 36 Thornell Road, Newton, New Hampshire. The properties are referenced as tax map 12, block 2, lot 22-3, and tax map 6, block 8, lot 7-2. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
My name's Dennis Quintel. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I can.
I, I'm having trouble viewing everything that's happening here, so I'm not sure I can help out too much, but for some reason. Okay, so the plan is up on the screen. Do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, so you can see here, I'm circling where it says parcel A. Do you see that? It's in red.
Yes, I see it.
Right, right there. Okay, so that's, that's an area that's two acres of land that the intent of this lot line adjustment is to add two acres of land from this remaining land, which now is 41 acres, to this parcel that was created last March. And this lot was 3.57 acres. And the intent of this lot line adjustment is to transfer two acres, parcel A, from the 41 acre remaining land to this 3.57 acre lot to obtain 5.57 acres. So, there's no other changes on the plan. There's no other changes to frontage. What we did do on this application is request a waiver for providing a high-intensity map and a topographic map. We do have, we did have those plans when we did the original subdivision. If you recall, this is a hill, and the intent of adding this two acres of land is to be able to construct the proposed house that's shown on that lot up onto the two-acre parcel and make it higher on the lot and also further away from the Vincent property. So that's the intent of this lot line adjustment. So, we've created this lot line adjustment plan. If it's, if it's, if the plan can be accepted as jurisdictional, then we could deal with the waivers and, and any conditions that we could get for an approval.
Is that it?
I think that that summarizes it. I wish I could do a little bit more with my computer. Normally, I'm able to share my screen a little bit more and provide more information. I just cannot do it this time for some reason.
In that case, Jennifer, do you have any comments?
My only comment is that the application does seem, appear complete. It doesn't require any variances. It does have the two waivers that Dennis mentioned. I have no concerns about this application.
Anybody on the Board have any comments?
This is Mike. I think we have enough information to take jurisdiction and now, without any, if there's no other further comment on that, I will move the motion that we take jurisdiction.
Shouldn't we do the waivers first, Jennifer?
No, you should take jurisdiction first because the waivers were submitted, the application is complete. If the waivers hadn't been, then it would not be complete.
Okay. Okay, there is a second. Jim White. Motion?
I, yes, this is Mike. Okay, yeah. Right to Jim, your second.
Any other comments on taking jurisdiction? Hearing none. Jim, can you call the roll?
Mr. Kronlook.
Aye.
Ms. Esterbrook.
Aye.
Mr. Foote. Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay. Now we're into the public hearing. Does anyone want to make a motion about the waivers?
This is Annie. I'll move that we grant waivers for both the topic graphic map and for the HIST map on this application.
This is Mike. I'll, I'll second that.
Anybody have any comments on that?
Just me, just Mike. I just, I think with a simple lot line adjustment, I think the, both waivers are justifiable.
Any, any other comments? If not, do you know, you call the roll?
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
Mr. Andrews.
Aye.
Ms. Collier.
Aye.
Mr. Kronlook.
Aye.
Mr. Foote. Ms. Esterbrook.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Okay, at this time, I would ask, are there any comments from anyone in the public? Does anybody have any additional comments on this application?
Well, Sandra.
Go ahead.
Can you bring back the map, Jim?
One moment.
Sure. Danny, I miss your colored maps. I wish you could share your screen.
Well, I know. I have it. I have the line. You can see the lines where it says lines to be eliminated and then lines to be created.
Yeah.
Those, those are the lines that are important right there. So that's the line to be eliminated. It's being highlighted there. And then this is the line to be created.
So I guess my question would be, I know this was proposed before the house was that close, so now you're going to be moving the house back on the lot, you said. So how much extension on that driveway and like, is it go uphill? Are you going to have to, like, take out some fill there or?
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a grade issue there, but they'll have to deal with that as far as where the driveway is, so. That's, that's, that's up to the house placement and the foundation, the height of the foundation. They'll, they'll work on that.
So how long do you think the driveway will be now?
I'm not sure what the length of it would be, but it's probably, probably 600 feet, maybe. We're proposing the driveway to be, to meet the fire requirements of 20 feet wide of a stable base and also have it checked out by the fire chief prior to proceeding further on, on, on developing the lot.
Mr. Quintel, if you'd like, I can move my little cursor to approximately where you think the house will be.
Yeah, pretty much right there where the little hand is, maybe a little bit further towards the proposed lot line. Right back in there. Yeah, that's about where it probably will be. So it's not much of an extension compared to another probably 30 feet because there's a 75, 100-foot radius for that well, so we're probably only talking about another 30 to 50 feet.
This is Annie. I'm very appreciative of your having mentioned, you know, having the homeowner get the fire chief's input and approval. So thank you.
Any other comments from anyone? Jen, do you have any recommendations for conditions for approval?
They would be standard ones that all, federal, state, and local permits. In this case, they're going to have to get the septic permit. That was part of the original subdivision approval, but there's no reason to not stick that on the current one. And if the Board wanted to put verification with the fire chief prior to any occupancy permit for the house because of the driveway, I think that that's also sufficient.
Yeah, and Jim, part of the standard ones is you'd also have to put, mark the bounds, right?
Yeah, there's one drill hole we'd have to put in onto that west of. Yeah, there's one drill hole we'll have to put in on, onto that west of the side along that proposed lot line. It's either a iron, iron pipe or a drill hole that's going to go into that, that, um, along that stone wall. Uh, that's the only monument that, that one right there, yes. That's the only monument that will have to be created. The other monuments are all in place. That one's already in place as part of the uh, other two lots. And so um, as far as conditions, we do have to set that monument and we have to provide a Mylar for the planning board to sign. But there isn't really any state uh, applications for this type of a lot line adjustment.
Okay, if anyone want to make a motion?
This is Annie. I'll make a motion to approve this lot line adjustment subject to the condition of all local, federal, state ordinances being complied with.
I'll second Sandra.
And also the other standard conditions that we have, like the, the, putting the monument in and making the Mylar.
Okay, good.
So Jimmy, you all said on what the conditions are?
There are three conditions. Um, state and local permits, mark the bounds and supply the Mylar.
Need to add anything else? Any other comments on the approval of the application? Can you, Jim, can you call a roll?
Uh, who seconded?
I did, Sandra.
Thank you. Mr. Kronlick.
Hi.
Mr. Andrews.
Hi.
Ms. Estabrook.
Hi.
Mr. Foote.
Hi.
Mr. White.
Hi.
Ms. Collier.
Hi.
Mr. Hamel.
Hi.
That's unanimous.
Okay, close the public hearing. That completes that item.
Thank you very much for your assistance tonight. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to, uh, to uh, zoom in better than this and, but I appreciate your help on getting this uh, passed and approved in this meeting.
You're welcome.
Yep, signing off.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Hello, guys, James?
Hello?
Hello, good afternoon. How you doing? This is Juan Orlandini.
Yeah, okay, well, right, right now, I'm going to uh, take the next item on the agenda. It's Juan Arzantini of Newton, New Hampshire, request a public hearing for the minor site plan food vending service at one eighty-five South Main Street, Newton, New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map fourteen, block one, lot twenty-four. Now, Mr. Orlandini, would you, would you want to make a presentation?
Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Juan Orlandini and I'm the owner of Flaco's Mexican Street Food. And I'm just applying to get some approval for a minor site plan. I do have also the help with Greg, the, uh, the manager of the Newton Properties LLC, which they are my landlords.
Present.
That would be Mr. Ravencraft.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you want to tell us a little bit more about your, your proposal or you think we are?
Yes, uh, just the proposal right now, what I'm trying to get, uh, it's basically something very temporary. I just need to expand my holding tanks capacity. Um, my holding tanks in the trailers are seventy-five gallons. But um, since I'm trying to, this is going to be my first year operating, trying to operate the business on the winter. So we are kind of in a problem that those small holding tanks, they're going to freeze. So that's the only reason I'm trying just to get um, bigger capacity, something that I can just vary temporary until next year, that we're going to have more money eventually to do like the, the right way to install everything the right way. Right now, it's just basically just to survive this winter.
Okay.
And also there is, there is no, um, it's only gray water. It's like water that we use just for washing our dishes and like cleaning our stuff inside the trailers. So the only reason I'm doing that is to avoid freezing and also to avoid like having my tanks pumped every two days.
So where are these storage tanks?
Uh, they are behind the, uh, the shed.
Oh, okay.
It's a fifteen fifty gallon capacity uh, gray water tank, which beats, uh, the, beats the sewer company. They are the ones uh, on charge to pump it. I think it's going to be like probably every three weeks or something like that. I'm just trying to avoid like smells and I'm trying to avoid like uh, problems for like during the winter.
Roger, Sandra, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Probably to Jen. Um, where this gentleman is actually a tenant of the people that own the property, do we have the tenant, those people's permission that he can speak? Or do we need that permission from the property owner?
We do have that, Sandy. They have an authorization letter.
Okay.
So yes, we do, but we have that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, do you want to, or your review letter?
Sure, so um, this application, I, while understanding it is a, a food truck operation because of its no longer a temporary um, use on the site, it does require a site plan. It does appear to qualify for minor site plan review. Um, one of the activities under minor site plan can be an amended site plan, which because the use is changing on this site, even though the construction of anything is, is minimal, it does meet that requirement for a minor site plan application. The planning board should discuss whether they feel it does meet those minimum um, requirements and that the impacts are not greater than what is the minimum related to health, safety, welfare um, of neighboring properties or the environment or natural resources. Concerning this specific project, I have a couple of concerns that are about the site generally and about the proposal itself. Um, the biggest one at this point is really the driveway. They will likely need an amended driveway permit from DOT. Um, or the board should, so the board should definitely require with any approval that a new permit be obtained or that you get notification from DOT that no changes are required. I am a little concerned because of the large area of asphalt that abuts one oh eight. Whether or not DOT may require that they do something to make it so that curb cuts not quite as um, expansive, but that is up to DOT that it has no jurisdiction through the town. Um, the next aspect is waste and I want to thank the applicant for expanding a little bit more about how waste was going to be dealt with, with those holding tanks. Um, but I do think that the board should require that any location of any dumpsters be located on um, a little bit more information to ensure that there will be adequate septic facilities, even if that is a porta potty, um, type for customers and many of the workers at the facility. So a little bit more information about that. Um, whether any signage is being proposed, I have not been to this site to see, although I do hear the food is quite good, um, to see if there is any signage up currently or proposed. Um, the fourth part is really customer seating. Typically with health regulations, if you have seating, you then need to supply restroom facilities that can often be a porta potty. The applicant should definitely check with the health inspector and building department and that should be a condition of any approval. Um, if the planning board doesn't want that information before they issue and potentially issue an approval. Um, and the last thing is really the hours of operation and seasonal timeframe. Um, it does sound like you're trying to operate the business year round going forward. Um, if, if that's what is sought, um, definitely having that be noted with the approval and what any potential hours may be, especially given the nature of this being more of a food truck. So a potentially mobile use, you want to have a good solidified um, recording as to what is being allowed and what is not being allowed. Um, given what is on the proposed site plan, the way it's sketched out, where that truck currently is, if this were to be approved, that is where it has to remain. I mean, you, it could be taken off and brought back to that site. You would not be allowed to move the food truck around the site, say, for different seasonal type events. So just so that's clear to the applicant. Um, but those are my main concerns or issues. Um, it does appear that the application is complete. Um, but I do think that the board should get a little bit more clarification on some of those topics. And I should say, the application, I think, is complete if you accept it as a minor site plan. If you consider it a major, then it is not complete.
Okay.
Roger, Larry.
Yes, go ahead, Larry.
Uh, so Roger, this business has been in business for the past year. I don't know why all of a sudden all these restrictions. Uh, he never had a porta potty, which was fine with the town. He, he's only upgrading from that small trailer to a larger trailer and just relocated it by ten feet. He's nowhere near one oh eight, so it should have nothing to do with the driveway. Um, that's just my concerns. The only difference is he's adding a larger gray water uh, tank and that's why he's before us.
So Larry, this is Jen, just to clarify, I only ever review applications that come before the planning board. There are often uses occurring out there that are not approved, but they are operating. Um, this very clearly requires a site plan because it is a non-commercial use that's expanding on a site. This definitely, it probably should have had one prior, uh, but that's up to the town to deal with if they choose to. But it definitely qualifies for the need for a site plan beyond just the addition of the holding tanks and a, a larger truck.
Yeah, a, a, and in terms of restroom facilities, I think it, it would be wise for us to defer to the health department and the building department on, on what, what kinds of requirements those should be.
Yeah, this is Greg with Newton Properties. It, it thought that Jen had said that a porta potty was suitable for, you know, this, this type of facility and the, the amount of people he's having coming there. Is that correct or no?
It, it can be, Greg, and this is Jen, but that is something that you need to defer to the health department to verify that.
Yep, Juan does have a, you know, porta potty, porta potty on, on site and, you know, his operation is very sterile and the amount of people that he comes, that, you know, that come to, you know, do takeout mostly, it doesn't seem to me like anything's it, it, it seems, it seems very sufficient with what, what he's doing as far as the porta potty goes.
Roger, Larry, Jen.
Go ahead, Larry.
So, so Jen, he's been there for the past year. He's had the fire inspection um, completed and passed. He's had the building department inspection completed and passed and the health department completed and passed um, for the past year. The only difference is the, the moving of the trailer in a, in a bigger trailer. So he's meeting all the town requirements as far as that department scope.
Why, why don't we first of all make the, this, the, live this to deciding, is this a qualify as a minor site plan? A, a, and whether or not we have adequate information to make a decision. And then once we, go ahead, Annie.
I wanted to make a motion that we say this does qualify as a minor site, site plan application.
Do you want to also say that we take jurisdiction?
Yes, and that we take jurisdiction.
Okay, is there a second?
It's Edwin, I'll second it.
Okay, uh, any comments on whether or not we take jurisdiction and approving it as a minor site plan?
Well, this is Sandra. Um, as far as it being a minor site plan, it seems to me like it's a little more than a minor because um, it's something new being added to the approved site plan. And now like they're talking about parking in a building and, you know, surge, whatever.
Sandy, this is Jen, just that, um, your minor site plan requirements typically do have a clause in there that you're not supposed to have anything new that's over two thousand square feet. But it also has a approval that if it's just an amended site plan, that can qualify in and of itself with not meeting anything else as a minor site plan.
Okay, thank you.
I know you typically look at things by that two thousand square feet, but this actually can also fall under that.
And we're well under the two thousand square feet anyway.
Right, well, I was looking at the, what, um, that, there's the accessory building.
Now, if that shed, well, by the way, any other comments about, does it qualify as a minor site plan?
Can, can I make a comment? This is Greg with Newton Properties.
Go ahead, Greg.
Okay, yeah, so I, I'm not exactly sure of the measurements of the outbuilding. I believe it's probably like, you know, twelve by two, you know, sixteen and then I believe Flaco, what, what, what size is your trailer?
My new trailer is uh, eight by thirty and my old trailer, it's eight by twenty. So I'm just adding ten feet. There's no building, uh, I mean, like, actual building is just a shed, which I do have the permit that I submitted last year for that. The only difference this time is, um, the porta potty is just for my employees usage. This year, I restricted the use of the seating area due to the COVID. And I'm just trying to add, uh, just increase my gray water capacity. That's it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get that. And so we are well below the two thousand square foot, um, you know, threshold, if you will, and the, the parking is, you know, very minimal. Most people come and go. We're looking at, 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 at the most I've seen, at the very, very most, like, five cars at a time. And they'll, they'll go and they'll, and they'll come. So um, i- if that helps you out with anything.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we vote on it being a minor site plan and taking jurisdiction? If not, Jim, will you call a roll on that question?
Mr. Kronlick.
Hi.
Mr. Andrews.
Hi.
Ms. Estabrook.
Hi.
Mr. Foote.
Hi.
Mr. White.
Hi.
Ms. Collier.
Hi.
Mr. Hamel.
Hi.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Now, now we can go on to the uh, discussion of the application itself.
What, what, if I may interrupt, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
There is a waiver request, which I emailed to everybody because this is the second minor site plan application within the past three years. There, the board would have to waive that limitation in their policies and procedures.
Yes, I thought I had printed that out, but I don't see it right now. I remember, I remember reading it. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion on the waiver?
This is Annie. I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver. This is Annie. I'll make a motion that we grant the waiver.
This is Larry, I'll second.
Any comments on the motion? If not, uh, Jim, will you call the roll?
Mister, Mister Fronlick?
Hi.
Mr. Andrews?
Hi.
Ms. Estherbrook?
Hi.
Mr. Foot?
Hi.
Mr. White?
Hi.
Ms. Collier?
Hi.
Mr. Hamel?
Hi.
And we've had a lot of comments already on the application. Does anyone have any additional comments on the application?
This is Annie. I'd like to hear from the applicant, um, in response to Jen's points. Um, just to hear about signage and the location of the porta potty. And, um, any waste location.
Yep, uh, Juan, Orlando City speaking. Um, so according, um, for the, the trash and that stuff, I do have, uh, my company that I've been working since last year. Uh, it's a ba- base state disposal. I do have, uh, one tan, tank yatter dumpster out back. The, uh, the gray, uh, the gray water is going to be handled by, uh, Pete's Sewer. And, uh, the oil, um, I recycle the oil. There's a company provided by US Foods. Which, uh, they are, they provide me, um, like a tank to keep all the, uh, the waste oil. And, uh, they come and just pump it out and pick everything up. Uh, about signage, there is not going to be any signs made. Uh, probably a couple of flags, but, uh, that won't happen until next year. Uh, since we're going to have snow very soon. Same, same thing with the seating. Uh, the only seating I have is outdoor seating and, uh, this year it won't happen.
But you are planning on having, you're, looking at, at, at the plan that you had. It looks like there, that you're showing like six tables. Is that once, once you do have seating again, is that basically what you're going to have?
Uh, yeah, it's about like six tables. Uh, they usually, my business is entirely mo- most of the time is to go. Just like the seating, it's, that's why I just added like six tables there, just like for convenience for some customers. Obviously, if I do have that, I will have to put a separate, um, porta potty just for customers' usage.
And the, one of the other items that Jennifer asked about was, what are the hours of operation?
Uh, for, for winter, right now, we modify the hours. We're closing, uh, we're opening from 11 till eight. I'm sorry, till seven. Uh, that's a new winter hours. And summer, uh, if we survive this winter, will be from 11 till eight.
Roger, this is Jen. Um, Mr. Monzie, are, what are the most hours you would potentially want to be open? Because one of the things with approvals with the planning board is if they approve something that is, say, 11 to eight. Those are the hours you're allowed to operate. So if you wanted to go until nine, potentially, you technically wouldn't be allowed to. So I would recommend you state whatever hours you are hoping that to ever have, that would be the maximum you would ever hope to have.
I will say like just, this is just in case that I have, uh, some kind of event. Because eventually, if I can make the place look nicer and, and I do all my crazy ideas I have in mind. I will try to, probably, I will say the latest, like 10. The latest, and that just like, probably could be like one day. Uh, usually in, in our town, everything dies at around like nine.
Hey, Juan, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt here, but would you see yourself opening up any earlier, say, you know, in the springtime or?
Eventually, um, for the springtime, uh, we do have, since we're going to be adding a new menu. Probably on Sundays, we're going to be adding, uh, Mexican brunch, just on Sundays. Probably could be just Saturdays and Sundays, some kind of a Mexican brunch. So, uh, if that happens, we're going to be closing earlier. Obviously, on the weekends.
Well, how early would you open for, for brunch?
Uh, in Mexican hours or American hours? I won't say like probably eight in the morning. Uh, obviously, we're going to start like cooking around like six in the morning. But that's using, still in the air for now.
But like, like Jen said, it's just important to, you know, get these things out like right now and that way you're, you're covered going forward. So just one more time, so everyone understands, you know, what, what time would you like to open? And what time would you like to close?
Okay, so, so if we, we put it that way, I will say like probably open at eight and close at 10.
Okay. And you, you talked about having a dumpster, but the plan doesn't show a dumpster.
Uh, the dumpsters, the dumpster, we have them all the way back, uh, like further down. Uh, I don't know, Greg, can you help me out, explaining the exact location?
Yeah, 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 I can. Um, I, I'm not sure how many people are familiar with, uh, the, um, site where Juan is located at, but the, uh, the dumpsters are located about 250 feet, basically like west. There's a, when you pull into the, um, driveway to Flaco's, uh, his restaurante, if you will. And, um, if you were to continue around, there's a driveway that goes down. We have a large clearing down in the back where we we used to have, uh, you know, Lydell, uh, another contractor down there, which we, we don't need anymore. But anyways, we have a large area down in the back and there's two small dumpsters down there. Where Flaco, you know, takes his, you know, trash down and dumps it in there as, as needed. They're out of sight, out of mind. And, um, we haven't had any complaints or anything like that from the putters as far as, you know, the, the times that he's dumping. It's just running down with a vehicle, throwing a, a black trash bag into a, uh, small 10 by 10 dumpster and then, and, and, and the dumpsters are also emptied during normal business hours.
Also, i- if you have people seating outside, do you have some trash receptacles for them?
Yes.
Yeah, is that, is that recall, there's, there's, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Juan, didn't mean to interrupt. But, um, as I remember, there's three or four gray 33 or 45 gallon black, you know, trash cans with the top on them that are by the fence posts. And then there's one over by the, uh, trailer and kind of by the corner and stuff that people can put their styrofoam containers that he, uh, sends his food with and, and that with.
Okay. Do any other board members have any questions?
Uh, well, this is Sandra. I see you have your food truck and then there's another area colored in that's a shed. How big is that shed? And what is that used for?
Is that the question for me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so, sorry, I didn't hear you. No problem. Uh, so tha- that's a 12 by 20 shed that I applied for the permit last year. And I use it, uh, for dry storage.
You use it for what?
So what, what, what's in that, what's in that shed, Juan? Is that where you have like your, uh, what, what's in there?
I do have the sodas and like, uh, some, like canned, uh, canned stuff. Uh, the, the container, foam containers, uh, whatever I need, uh, just for extra stuff.
So there's actually two accessory buildings or whatever on the site.
No, it should be, should be just, just one, basically, the shed. And will be the shed and the trailer. That's it.
So that's two.
Technically, Sandy, the, the food truck is actually not a structure because it's on wheels.
Yeah, so it's one.
Any other board members have any questions or comments?
Uh, this is Mike. I'm just trying to clarify the, the whole dumpster. So it's almost like the, the, from, uh, going forward with this, the dumpster is off-site. Is that because it's so far away, it's not really on this locate, you know, the, the location of the restaurant area? Because normally we would want to see the exact location of the dumpster, but because it's so far away down and back somewhere, I don't know if it's required.
Mike, this is Jen, just to, um, it, from what they're describing, it, it is located on the property, just not on the view that was provided. There is a site plan on file at the planning board and Jim, please let me know if I'm incorrect in stating this. That shows the full extent of that site. A condition of approval that the planning board sought to could be that the dumpster location either needs to be shown on what is effectively the full site, and it could be drawn via a photocopy. Alternately, if there's a location that the dumpster can be placed, that is shown in the vicinity of what was provided on this colored site plan, you could require it be indicated on this plan as conditions. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and it's not the dumpster that's right behind the office that, uh, looks like Jim's trying to massage.
No, that's not the one.
Okay, I didn't think so.
So, um, Sandra, I just have one more question about lighting. Are you going to pu- propose any lighting out there where at night, you know, the people that are eating can see?
Uh, my tra- my trailer does have, uh, like a couple spotlights. Uh, that they are installed by factory on the, on the trailer itself. I might have to add like just couple of those like fair lighting cords used to make it look nice and cozy, but, uh, nothing major. It's just like those, the one that you just plug into the same trailer. I'm trying to stay as contained as I can.
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Does anyone from the public wish to speak? If we don't have any more questions or comments, does someone want to make a motion?
Uh, just to add one thing. So before the motion, I just want to clarify because it sounded like we have some conditions. Basically, ones that Jen mentioned. It sounds like from you, Larry, that a lot of those have been met in the past. Although I don't think there was a, a site plan done in the past. So I just want to clarify which of those conditions we think should be attached to any, uh, any, any proposed vote.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to read the list that I've made so far?
Yes, please.
Okay, item one is obtain all local and state permits. Item two is the new driveway permit from the NHDOT. Number three is to add the trash receptacles and dumpster to the site plan. Item four would be to add the location for the, uh, porta potty to the site, to the plan. Um, that there would be no new signage. And the hours of operation, which I have as winter hours of operation, will be 11 to 7.
Yeah, actually, I, I think, Jim, we want to just say the hours of operations will be, be limited to 8 AM to 10 PM.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Roger, Larry?
Yes.
I don't think that dumpsters are issued, the dumpsters are on the site plan for 185 South Main. They own those dumpsters. And they're just allowing him to dump his trash. Is that correct, Greg?
Yeah, that's correct, Larry. Thank you for clarifying that.
I don't think that should be an issue to hold him up if the dumpsters aren't property, but they're on more of the 185 South Main behind their main building. And he just dumps their trash in there with permission from the landlord because he's a renter. As far as the driveway.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
And the driveway should be covered under 185 South Main Street also, as they didn't uh, reconfigure anything there. Um, again, correcting correctly on that. I'm sure his site plan has that whole driveway covered, oh, Rick.
No, no, that's also correct, Larry. I, I would agree with you 100% on that. It, it's, it's, it's sufficient for what we're doing, for sure, for what, what.
We, we corrected that last year when he was, uh, his trailer was up more by 108. And we had him move it back to where it was because he was not in compliance with the 10 feet of a major highway. So he complied with that and he met all the restrictions last year by moving it where it is now. So he's just basically swapping out trailers and adding a bigger holding tank. But all the other restrictions fall under 185 South Main as the owners of that property.
Yeah, uh, I would suggest in terms of, for the trash, that the, the condition would be that the, the, the trash will be handled by the landlord.
That, that's correct. We, we do handle that, yes.
Yeah, so, so I think we are, we, we could put that in, in the conditions for, yes.
Roger, this is, Roger, this is Jen. Can I offer a slight alternate to that as a suggestion?
Go ahead.
That the food truck business will utilize the already approved onsite dumpsters.
Lovely.
And concerning the driveway permit, my, my concern is that DOT always wants their driveway permits to be issued for what uses are occurring on the site. You know, because the food truck was allowed via the town to sit there does not mean that DOT had approved it for their driveway permit. I understand that it is a very low-volume traffic generator compared to a lot of other things on 108. But DOT may still want to take a look at it. They may not require any changes, but they'll still want to take a look at it.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, Jen, uh, this is Greg with, uh, Newton Properties. So I just want to clarify. What Juan is trying to do is install a couple of, uh, or, you know, a, a gray water tank behind his trailer just to be, you know, pumped out for dishwater and, um, you know, grease and, you know, whatnot. And so does this have anything to do with the driveway?
It, so this minor site plan has to do with the use on the property, which as of right now, this site does not have an approval for a food business operation. You know, if it was a food truck legitimately coming once a week to give folks lunch, that would be a temporary use. This is a, um, permanent use that's being proposed. That's what elevates it to a requiring a site plan. So it's not, it's not the holding tanks that are, I'm going to say, the issue from my perspective. It's, it's the use generally.
I understand, okay.
Uh, the other issue that was not, that Jim, you didn't mention in, in the list is, do we want to say something about Not that Jim, you didn't mention in the list is do we want to say something about that it has to be reviewed by the. Just to to highlight that it needs to be reviewed by the health department to see if they require a porta potty for our customers.
Well, I think we've kind of superseded that by already providing. A porta potty for customers.
I thought he said the porta potty was just for employees.
He did.
No, yeah, he's gone over and above and already has one there.
Roger, I think you only need a porta potty if it's a sit down establishment, which at this time it's not. It's a really.
But the plan shows that it will be.
Roger, this is Barbara. May I say something?
Go ahead.
Yes, he did indicate that he has a porta potty now for his workers and his people who he worked, you know, his his employees. And he said that he was going to get another one for his customers.
So that should show on the plan somewhere then proposed and where they are.
So Sandy, this is Jen, showing the exact porta potty location, I don't think. Is necessary because that may need to move just based on access a little bit. But indicating as a condition that adequate septic facilities or porta potty facilities will be provided. Depending on the necessity of customer seating or not or health department regulations. May cover that so that at this point, if if. If one never decides to have outdoor seating, he might not need the additional porta potty. He might never need it. You meet all health codes. But if you do decide to have it because you're asking for it on this site plan, then at that time, then you should would have to check with the health department to verify whether or not that was necessary. So it could be a condition that's on here that doesn't have to be the condition doesn't have to be met until such time as the. Outdoor seating is actually going to happen.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minus site plan, food vending service located 185 South Main. Property reference to tax map 14 block one lot 24.
I'll second it. It's Edwin.
We want to add the conditions.
The conditions.
With the conditions that he calls the. He calls the state for the property management 185 South Main calls the state come down and look at the driveway. Where the cars are coming in and out of and I don't think you'll have an issue with that.
Okay, Jim, why don't you list list the the conditions that we have now that we've had all this discussion?
Okay.
Everyone's clear.
Obtain all local and state permits, new driveway permit from the from the DOT if applicable.
Okay, again, this is Greg with Newton Properties. I just want to clarify the procedure. So. If we. Contact the DOT and have them out, who shall we send like an email to? Stating that the driveway meets the requirements for what Mr. Juan is. Doing over here.
The DOT will actually contact you and will send you an email saying either what you have to do or. That you are in compliance and you then forward that to the office.
Okay, then then we'll we'll forward that to the planning board.
Yes.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Item three is the trash will be handled by the landlord. No new signage hours of operation will be limited to eight AM to 10 PM. Adequate restrooms for customers will be supplied for the health department requirements as outdoor seating is made available.
Anybody have any comments on the motion and the conditions? If not, Jim, will you call a roll?
Mr. Kronlick?
Hi.
Mr. Andrews?
Hi.
Ms. Esterbrook?
Hi.
Mr. Foot?
Hi.
Mr. White?
Hi.
Ms. Collier?
Hi.
Mr. Hamel?
Hi.
That is unanimous.
Okay, I close that public hearing. That completes the public hearings for tonight. Now we'll go to Board Business and Correspondence. The first item is a NEPR manifest, which I believe there isn't one tonight. Is that correct, Jim?
Correct. I sent out a. Email. I thought earlier.
I don't recall getting one.
I don't either.
Thank you very much, guys.
You're welcome, Juan.
Have a great day.
Yeah.
Thank you, Juan.
See you later. Bye bye.
I got the email, Jim.
I was gonna say I sent it out. It was, I think, five thirtyish.
Yeah, it came in pretty late.
Yeah.
I got nothing else to do in life.
I got it too. This is Barbara.
So but the the email was that there's no NEPR?
Correct.
Okay, next item is the acceptance of minutes from 10:2720.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to thank Mr. Jim Doggett and the planning board. Thank you. This is Greg.
You're welcome, Greg.
Yeah. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Yeah, good night.
This is Annie. I move to accept the minutes as written of October 27, 2020.
Okay, any comments? If not, Jim, will you call a roll?
Mr. Hamel?
Hi.
Mr. Kronlick?
Hi.
Mr. Andrews?
Hi.
Mr. Foot?
Hi.
Mr. White?
Hi.
Ms. Collier?
Hi.
Ms. Esterbrook?
Hi.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Next is the. 2021 schedule. You've received it in your packet. I do have one comment. On in March. On the the second set of things, the notice to the.
Mr. Hamel, which were you referring to?
The March, the the second meeting in March. All of the other notices to the Carriagetown News go out on Mondays. Some reason you have this one dated for two days later. On a Wednesday.
Quite honestly. I don't know how that happened.
So that should be Monday, March 1st.
Exactly.
At this time, I would. Look for a motion to adopt the schedule for 2021 with the one change that was just made.
This is Annie. I moved I moved to adopt this schedule as amended.
Second, Sandra.
Any other comments? If not, Jim, will you call a roll?
Mr. Hamel?
Hi.
Mr. Kronlick?
Hi.
Mr. Andrews?
Hi.
Mr. Foot?
Hi.
Mr. White?
Hi.
Ms. Collier?
Hi.
Ms. Esterbrook?
Hi.
That's unanimous.
Okay, next item is cover letters. Jim, will you address this?
Okay, after the last meeting, I'm going to get rid of the. And bring them up. We had the board discussed putting cover letters with. The. Notices of decision. So last Thursday, I started drafting. The basic what you see here in black. I then, sorry, I did that on Monday. I then sent it to the. Building inspector for his input. And what he added is in red and then. There's been some modifications. You'll see some things that have been struck out in red.
I don't see any colors.
Oh, okay.
All I see is Newton Properties LLC. Is that what we're supposed to be looking at?
Oh, sorry. You're not seeing that. Okay. Okay, after. Okay, can you see it now?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Much better. Thank you.
I could probably make it larger, but I don't know whether or not it would what that might do on people's screens. Anyway, now you can see that the the block is what I originally typed out. Some of it is directly quoted from. Either zoning or policies and procedures. Some of it's just information that I've always thought should go on there. There are separate ones for home based business, accessory apartment. Minor site plan, major site plan and subdivision or lot line adjustment. They each have different verbiage. I submitted them to the building inspector who added what's it says in red. I did a little bit of editing because I, my own personal opinion. The minute you start giving lists of things that such as the modifications such as exit lighting handrails. Anything that's not on that list. Will get you in trouble. So it's better not to have a list than to put a list in that is not complete. And the. Building Department actually grants the occupancy permit. It's not the the fire department gives input and has to sign off, but it is not granted by the. Fire Department. But you notice that it definitely says that you the person needs to meet with the bills, building inspector and the fire department for their permit. Same on accessory apartments. I removed the. The list of possible things. It just it saves the the board from getting into trouble. On the minor site plan. It may or may not require. Changes to fire codes. On the major site plan, the fire department has been added to the preconstruction meeting. And he added nothing to the subdivision or lot line adjustment. So I don't know if you want to go through each one individually and I can modify things possibly while people talk.
Does anyone want to have any comments?
This is Annie. I thought that the items that were added in red, those were things that I would have suggested tonight that we add that sort of thing. I think it's pretty good. I'm a little bit against having passive tenses like modifications may be required. I'd rather say either may require modifications, but it's pretty petty. I mean, whatever the board wants.
This is Sandra too. Yeah, I think people get confused that like planning board is a land use board. Like, like you said, we govern over the land and the building that goes on the land, not necessarily, like you said, all the fire codes, all the building codes. So I think that's where people like they tend to blame us, but it's not us. It's like we just do the land things. So they shouldn't assume the other things because like I said, we didn't know jurisdiction over those.
That is Mike. So far what I see, I agree with and I agree with you, Jim, on not listing particular. Items because there will always be something that will be left out and that will come back to bite us. So I keep it general like you did.
The one thing that I would, and it is very kind of petty, but on the last paragraph that I started with, unless otherwise specified. You have six months to comply with the conditions. I would I would like to say all the conditions, just to.
If I if I may, Mr. Chair, I would like the board to have a discussion. Once this is approved, I'm running into a certain issue with some of the conditions. Conditions need to be separated into those that are met and those that are going to be ongoing.
Okay, yeah, okay.
The 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 board presently says the this is and that wording is basic. What we have in our policies and procedure manual at the moment. That if you haven't complied with all of the conditions. Your notice of decision lapses. However, at the last meeting. We put some conditions that are not to be met. Those are perpetual, like tonight, hours of operation. That 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 is something that is perpetual and. From what I've gotten from feedback from some of the people that have received notices of decision. They've asked, you know, how do we meet this? And, you know, my response has been kind of a blank stare.
Jim, this is Jen. Typically, when you have conditions of approval. Because they are conditions for approval. So if you need a permit or you need to provide something. Those are conditions required before the board will sign off on whatever the application is. Subsequent conditions like hours of operation simply need to be complied with once final approval is granted. Those are if you need to provide something or obtain something prior to having a final sign off by the planning board. Those are the conditions that must be met within the six months.
So we call it conditions of approval?
They are. They're all conditions of approval, but some of them have a timeframe tied to them before you can sign off. So before you. Their condition of approval that you obtain or provide. it's things that, for lack of a better, if they have an action tied to them, like you will provide or you will obtain, they have to do that before you guys sign anything. If it's simply the hours of operation will be, if they're future tense, then those are not things that have to be completed within six months.
Yeah, I think we understand that. I think that what I'm looking at is how can we write it in a way that an applicant understands it when they walk away with a copy of this that we're looking at right now.
Typically, most boards will group them so that things that must be obtained prior to final approval are actually the, the second half of them and things that are just the general are the first.
Okay.
To break them out, so they're not intermingled.
So for instance, this is Annie. For instance, with our motion on the taco place, if we had said, grant the approval of the minor site plan with hours of operation of da, 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 and subject to the following conditions, and then list the conditions that have to be met within the six months. We just need, it seems to me that if we, if we do our motions just a little bit differently, so that we don't co-mingle them, that will be more clear to people.
Yeah, that might be the easier way to do it, certainly.
And it has to be at least know, like with the taco stands a little different. He's an ongoing business, but these are conditions to get to even start a business under a normal, normal application.
Right.
If the board would like, I can go through the template that I use for the notices of decision and bring to the next meeting some suggested modifications. I mean, we, the board has never adopted specifically the notice of decision. It has always been written by whoever is sitting in this chair. However, I did, I have gotten some feedback from a couple of people because we record the the conditional notice of approval that anytime we have something like hours of operation, that needs to be, and I can, I can change it to group it under general conditions. And the other category would be remedy, remedial conditions.
Conditions of approval, how about?
Well, they're, they're all conditions of approval, but separating them into general conditions and
What was the word Jen used? Jen said two categories of approval.
Subsequent
Yeah.
Conditions are ones that are after the, oh, and I'm forgetting the term. I apologize. If I come up with it, I can send it over to Jim. It's, it's a legal term for it, and it's blanking on me right now. My apologies.
This is, this Barbara, may I speak?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm thinking that general conditions could be something like the hours and everything, and maybe the next set of conditions should be conditions to be met within six months.
Should it be somehow spelled out a little bit better, just so that, I know there shouldn't be any question, but that an applicant actually knows. I can't start running, you know, doing this business until I get these complied with, and I have six months to do it. And if I don't get these done within six months, my conditional approval lapses. We all know what, what, you know, that's the meaning of this, but is it clear enough?
Once the board comes up with a term, I, I will modify this to add, if you see the, the, the last paragraph, otherwise, unless otherwise specified, within the notice, you have six months to comply with the sequential conditions.
That's the wrong word. It's the other one.
Yeah.
It's pre- subsequent.
Subsequent is the ones that are after the final approval.
Okay.
With precedent?
Yeah, right. That's what it is. It's conditions precedent.
So if we, if we do in our motions, subsequent conditions and precedent conditions, and then just say in here, if precedent conditions are not met within
That should work.
Yeah, because the precedent conditions allow them to get started. If they don't do the subsequent conditions, they get shut down.
Okay.
Right.
So I will add subsequent here.
Oh, well.
No, precedent.
Precedent there.
Precedent. I'm not going to be typing right at the moment. I'm trying to write what people are saying. And I will, this evening's notices of decision will have the will be the first use. I will separate things into precedent and subsequent.
Right.
Roger, this is Jen. I apologize for doing this in the chat, but for those of you that can see the chat feature in Zoom, I did put the two sort of categories of the, of conditions of approval. This is how it's laid out in the OSI Planning Board Handbook.
I, I knew I was, that's what I've been thumbing through while I was looking. I knew I had seen it.
Yeah, it's on section five, page 15. But if you can see the chat, you can see the little paragraph, but
Correct.
Could you read it, please? I don't have a computer today.
Sure. It says, there are two general categories of conditions. Conditions precedent are the conditions that must be fulfilled before the planning board may give final approval to an application such as receiving state permits, obtaining bonds for construction, and making revisions to the plans. Conditions subsequent are conditions that appear on the final plan and detail with restrictions on the use of the property or safeguards that must be observed during development on the parcel or once the project is in use. Such issues might include the location of a road, preservation of vegetation, and stone walls, or hours of operation, and details of security, securing protection for commercial uses.
So I'm kind of thinking that putting in most of that, not the examples, but just putting in the definition of precedent and subsequent conditions as a part of each one of these letters might be helpful to the applicant.
Yeah, because they might, they might not recognize what the words mean.
Yeah. Particularly because Jim is going to take the ones we did tonight and add those in. So, you know, one wouldn't have heard them.
I, I have Jen's definitions, and I will work them into
Going forward, should we add those to our, like our definitions in our book? For clarity later on?
We could do that at some point.
I think that's a good idea.
I will start adding them. I use, I make a little cheat sheet for myself for the conditions. And I will add two separate headings. One for conditions precedent, one for conditions subsequent.
Great.
Okay. We pretty much got this wrapped up?
I believe so. With those corrections, may I start using these?
Yes, I don't have to sign.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, I don't know how the rest, I don't know if the rest of the board wants to approve without seeing the final draft. Obviously, if it's going out under my signature, I'm going to approve what, approve of it, but, you know, if you've redone it, and we haven't had a approved text before, so I, I'm fine with going forward. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
This is Annie. I'm fine with going forward. I think that the essence of the discussion that we had, I think we all kind of understand what it's going to say, and Roger is going to have his signature on it. So he's the one who really should make sure it's all there the way that we just discussed.
Okay. Very good. So that, that closes that item. Not on the agenda, but I wanted, last meeting, we talked about setting up committees, and I volunteered to work on getting some verbiage to change our rules of procedure. I volunteered to do that because I thought I had a model that I was just going to have to lightly edit and drop in. Unfortunately, that doesn't exist. So now I'm working on, I've, I've been scouring around, looking at other boards and, and how they deal with committees, and hopefully I will have some language that we can talk about at the next meeting.
Thanks for doing that, Roger.
Hey.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I, I only volunteered because I thought it was going to be easy.
Roger.
First rule of volunteering.
Roger, this is Jen. I can send you Northampton's. They have a formula for how they deal with subcommittees that you can take a look at.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other issues to be brought before the board this evening?
I just have one. Do we hire counsel? Do we put out a?
I was just going to interrupt the chair to let people know. Ms. Garo has been engaged by the Newton Planning Board. Her firm prefers that individual board members not contact her, but did she hear basically from the chair or the administrative assistant? Those were her only two words. As soon as something comes forward that the board would like her to address, it will be sent to her.
Okay. Hey, Roger, or this is Mike. I got one, maybe it's a, it's a request, and it basically because we have, like with tonight's meeting and the ZBA meeting was last night, is there any way that, I know they'd be putting a lot on you, Jim, but that we could get a heads up on some of the findings of the ZBA meeting pertaining to a particular project that we're going to be hearing right away? Not that it necessarily matters on our decisions, but it would be, I know I would feel good. I kind of guessed what it was when I went back and looked at the minutes from them of the meeting before this, because I didn't think they would change it much. Is that something that we can do?
There really is. Go ahead, Ann.
I was just going to say, we have, we have a member of our board who is there.
Would that be reasonable?
I, I mean, if, for instance, you know, today I, I emailed Jen and, and to let her know what the, what the ruling was from, from, from last night's ZBA meeting. But I, I don't, don't know how much detail you're looking for. I mean, obviously, the, the minutes are going to come out long after we meet.
Yeah.
And they, though, though they are now meeting in person. So, but their meetings are not televised.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Roger, this is Barbara. May I speak?
Yes.
Okay, I think what Mike was talking about was for the planning board to have any kind of official notification, what, what had happened at the meeting, not just maybe something that was stated by the applicant when we are not sure of what the actual decision was. And I'm a little surprised that they don't take their decision knowing that we have a meeting with the same thing the next day and put, at least put the decision back up onto the internet so that, you know, onto the website so that we could see what the answer was.
Yeah, because I know our last meeting, you know, we've, we've seen that where the, the applicant ends up telling us their story of how was EBA meeting, Wes?
Right, and we have no corroboration that that's what actually happened, really, without a notice.
Yeah, I, I don't know of any mechanism that could work really, you know, relatively quickly to to do that.
Okay.
Jen, have you seen this in any towns?
Um, not specifically this issue. I think the, the only thing that could be done quickly is, and relatively simply, is that if the zoning board makes a vote on a decision concerning maybe applications that are before the planning board, especially if it's known it's the next night, simply to at least know what the, what the vote on that decision was, you probably, you, it, it would be hard pressed for anybody to then give all the reasoning for the decision, but at least to know what the solid decision was. What was the vote on whatever motion? That seems fairly reasonable.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. And it could be as simple as, say, the, the member, a member there or their chair or their administrative assistant or the equivalent just emails a copy of their, say, their agenda, and then they can just say either this was approved or this was denied under each, depending on how they list out their agenda.
I, if you'd like, I will speak with the ZBA person and find out if she'll be, she could send me a note after the meeting saying what the decisions were.
That would be great. I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? If not, at 8:52, I declare us adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night.